Well, Ken, thanks for joining me today.
Oh, Carlin, thanks for having me. I'm a little bit late to the party here, but hopefully I can give you some good information.
Yeah, no, I I'm glad you did because we were, we are getting people asking me, where are the ones that that are running for council that aren't on video? So I do appreciate you coming to to do this. And as a couple of things before we get going, thank you for your service. You've been on council since 2013, which is quite a long run, which is awesome. But I know that it's no doubt not all fun, right? I know there's a lot of work that needs to be done. A lot of, I call it volunteering as well, that needs to be done when you're on council. So from a resident of Oketoks, we appreciate what you're doing, Ken.
Oh, thank you very much. I not everybody would call it volunteering.
Yeah, that's, you know, we'll talk about this later, but I kind of want anyway, no, I won't talk about it now. We'll talk about it later. So I got a little bit of a mission after the election. So so we're going to go through the questions. We've got seven questions in front of us. I'm just going to ask the questions. I'm not going to dive into anything until we're done the questions. And then once we're done the questions, if anything stuck out in your answers that I want to circle back on, we will certainly do that. So Ken, can you start off telling us a little bit about yourself and what has motivated you to seek reelection again for Oketoks Town Council?
Yeah, again, thank you very much for having me. Like you said, I've been on town council for 12 years now, and it really has been an honor and a privilege. I I moved to Oketoks in 1981 with my family. So I've been, I'm one of those people. I've been here since there was one kind of one stoplight in town. I'm a former small business owner in Oketoks for about 15 years. I'm a longtime youth sports coach and volunteer. From an education standpoint, I have a business degree from the University of Calgary and a postgraduate certificate from the University of British Columbia. And I think I'm pretty grounded. I'm pretty approachable and I'm very community minded.
For sure. Ken, what is your vision for Oketoks over the next four years? And what role do you see yourself playing in helping achieve that vision?
Thank you again for the question. I think there's a lot to get into, but I'll, my focus is sustainable and balanced growth. It's growth that pays for itself. It's not growth for growth sake. We need to protect environmental stability, and that's water, green space, and so on. Support social stability, housing for all life stages, while keeping the community connected. So that's the parks, the pathways, the gathering spaces. Maintain small town heart while evolving as a modern municipality, which I think we are right now. We've, we've been a city for some time. And I guess the the key message there is growth done right makes the community stronger. When it's done wrong, it chips away at what makes it special. And I believe Oketoks is a special place.
In your view, what are the two top or three issues facing Oketoks right now? And how would you approach them if elected?
I I can give you a couple of issues here. Some, some are more recent to people's minds than others, but growth and traffic seems to be on people's minds right now. And always we'd be supporting small business. So the the town is expanding the road network and always is to ensure safe flows for not just drivers, but for pedestrians as well. Growth creates affordability opportunities. So homes for first time home buyers, families and people that want to downsize and stay in the community as well. The strong business community, very important for Oketoks. And we've heard that cutting red tape is is a priority. And we, I think we've done a much better job with that, but more work to do. We have an economic development team that supports entrepreneurs in town. And essentially, a thriving business community means a thriving town.
Oketoks continues to face challenges around growth, housing and infrastructure. How do you believe the town should balance development with maintaining its character and livability?
Thank you again for the question. I think some of that is guided by the town strategic plan, which is shaped by resident input. It's important to protect the small town feel, but plan for the future as well. Some things that are important are events that build up connection, light up Oketoks Parade Day. Those are very well known events. You want community growth where you're developing spaces that bring people together. Walking paths, dog parks, from a more capital lens arenas, the dog stadium. I I believe it's the shared spaces that define who we are as a community.
Many residents want more transparency and involvement in decision making. How would you ensure residents' voices are heard and represented at council?
I do hear that from, from people. And I I think I've tried to do that in the past councils have tried to do that. Public engagement does build trust and transparency. I I think that's very true. It helps show residents that their input can influence decisions. And and we do take that seriously. And I know I definitely do. We try to meet people where they, where they are, not just at town hall, but at community connectory events where council would go out and say, here we are. Come, come talk to us about your issues. So there, there's some more digital tools as well, town halls, surveys, social media. We do something interesting that I think a few municipalities have grabbed on to, and that's participatory budgeting. That's where people can go and take a look at what what they would increase or decrease for a service level and how that would affect what taxes might be. And people that do that, I think, come away with a a bit of a different viewpoint on how tech tax dollars can get spent and what are the given takes that always have to happen to try to achieve your goals.
Town council works as a team and also with Foothills County and the province. How do you approach collaboration and compromise to get results for Oketoks?
I I do think that that's a strength of mine, and that's something that comes with experience as well. But I think I'm pretty good at building consensus, finding common ground. I've over 12 years, I've collaborated with many different personalities on council. I've collaborated a lot with Foothills County and and the different councillors they've had. And I've had many meetings with provincial representatives. And it really is about having an open mind, finding consensus, not being closed minded. Kind of ask the question to yourself, what, what if, what if I'm wrong? You know, what, I should be listening to other people. So I like to think I focus on the solutions, not not politics. I'm really built into the like I said, I'd like to focus on solutions and not the politics. I think strong relationships, they'll enable honest, results driven discussions. And it might be kind of tired, but I think you get more done when you listen first. I I believe that's what I do. Keep an open mind.
Right on. If residents remember just one thing about you after listening to this conversation, what should it be?
Well, again, I'm, I'm grateful for the 12 years of service I've been allowed to have. I'm humbled by the residents' trust. And I'd be humbled to have another opportunity as well. I guess I'm committed to, to working with integrity and balance. And I think that's what I, what I've done so far. I'm like to think I'm pretty steady. I'm practical. I look for solutions. Again, I approach things with an open mind. I'd like to think I'm dedicated to keeping Oketoks livable, connected, proud of its roots. I know I I'm proud of its roots. One thing I'll do for sure, I'll keep showing up, listening and doing the work like I think I have. Oketoks deserves nothing less.
Yeah, right on. Well, thanks for answering those questions. So now I'm just going to circle back on a few things, actually, something that you didn't touch on, which I'm very curious to hear your perspective as a current council member seeking reelection, and that's taxes. We have some people that are running on platforms basically saying they're going to freeze taxes. They're going to, you know, really try to push her back and, you know, slow down, maybe even a tax reduction, some people are saying as well. What are your thoughts on that, Ken?
I find that interesting from a, from a practical manner. We did have zero taxes through COVID. And so it is possible. You can find a way to do that. It's, in my opinion, it's not sustainable to do that. You to lower taxes and freeze taxes at zero. I guess it's possible, but the, then you have to look at what service level do we not want to have anymore? The world does get more expensive and we're just part of that world. So it can be done. You, you could freeze taxes. You would just have to decrease service levels on certain things because prices go up. It's not something I would advocate for. I'd try to advocate for what I believe makes sense, which is a tax increase that's somewhere close to the consumer pricing index. So yeah, it'd be a municipal pricing index, but it's hard to get for Oketoks. But it would be typically right now, it's inflationary right now. It'd be somewhere between three and four percent is what I would consider reasonable. To, to freeze taxes is it's definitely an easy thing to say when you're campaigning, but when you sit down and actually look at the numbers and how things work, practically, it's, it's very difficult unless you want to cut service and I think take the town backwards as opposed to forwards.
Right. Okay, Ken, because you're coming into this a little bit later in the game, I'm going to really push, push your, well, no, I'm not really going to push your buttons that much. But I'm going to, I'll probably go ask some questions that I would, I didn't know to ask when I was at the start of everything. And it's just through, yeah, exactly. It's sitting through some forums and different things like that. So one thing that the current council is being, some people are accusing the current council of is collaboration. The votes are a high percentage. I don't even know where the, I don't even know where this information is coming from, Ken. They're saying that it seems like the current council is too connected. They vote all the same. What are your thoughts when you hear, because I'm sure this is not the first time you're hearing, hearing this. I'm sure you've heard this before. But what are your thoughts when you hear that kind of, those kind of things being said about the current council?
I think I've heard that about every council. So, so that's not new. I would, I would say that we're, if everyone's voting the same all the time, may, maybe we're not seeing things through a different lens as we could be, but I, I disagree with, with that analysis. In the end, after a lot of discussion, sometimes we come to the same conclusion. There, there was a recent vote where I was pretty animated, probably the most animated I've been at town council, where I wanted a, a certain thing to vote my way. And I, I lost that vote. And we had voted on it in a, in a couple of different manners and, and I lost. And that happens all the time. So I would say that I'm again, open minded. So if someone's got a different viewpoint and they want to vote in a different way and they're, they're able to convince me with some logic and some thought and some education and some work that that's the best way. I'm, I'm happy to again, be open minded and and change how I'm thinking again with the thought of, you know, what if, what if I'm wrong? I'm not always right. It's group decision making. I'd be happy to listen to a dissenting opinion.
For sure. Yeah. And that's, you know, I've talked about this time and time again on the podcast and, you know, here. And that's sometimes the beauty of municipal politics, right? We're not always seeing the debates. We're not, you know, we might see the stats as to how the vote went in the end, but we also maybe aren't privy to the conversations that transpired as well, right? And that brings me back to the question number five about transparency. I feel that a lot of that information is there, whether you because you see certain things that people, oh, I didn't know this was happening, but it was probably made public at some point. There was probably some kind of public records that people could dig up, go find, or some Facebook post or whatever. But it's just communication is just so difficult these days, right? Everybody communicates in a different way. So I know that that's a big task of any council is communication. And sometimes they may look like a lack of transparency based on the fact that they're trying to communicate. They send out an email and they hope that X amount of percentage of people get that email. But anyways, that's a little bit of a soapbox there. But that's a very difficult thing for
That a little bit, sure. I can speak to that a little bit if we got time.
Sure, we got time.
We, yeah, we, I think that that's always been an issue, but as things have grown up, especially I would point to the town's webpage where there, there's just a ton of information on it. And every business center wants the front page. So that's the first thing people, people see. But the information is all, is all there. And we, we try to be very adamant about getting the information out. It's so much easier at the council table if all the information is there as opposed to people feeling surprised. That they don't know what's going on because those people come in and they're legitimately very concerned because they think something's happening that they haven't been informed about, that it's been, you know, talked about and they haven't been made aware. So it's far easier to be out in front of the message, have the message out in all the best ways that you can as opposed to dealing with it after the fact where people feel like they've been, they're, they're hearing something that they've never heard before.
So what, another, it seems like anybody we talk to, whether it's the people running for merits council or it's people from residents of Oketoks, every, everybody's talking growth and not really feeling that they're necessarily being heard. And I know that we can't stop growth. But what are, what are some ways that you feel current council and what you're going to bring into the, the next council of ways to alleviating people's stress that our town is changing and we're growing too fast. And we're going to be a town of 90,000 next year. That's what people are, are fearing, right? What's, what's I know.
I, I think people do, do have that feeling that it, it's just growing way too fast. And I mean, we did try to stop growth. There was a growth gap in town. And it's just not sustainable. We're, we're surrounded by a municipality that if, if we don't grow, there, there's a number of reasons and it would probably take too long to explain here, but if, if we have sustainable growth, that, that's a positive. We've the reason why I moved here and stayed here is because it's a beautiful community and we, it's hard to keep that secret and other people know too. So people are going to come and move to the region that we know. You know, Calgary added 100,000 people in one year, two years ago, when it was very busy. So we will grow in the region that there's, there's not a doubt of that. But what we can do our best with is is managing that growth. So we keep Oketoks character alive again through how we interact as a community, how we build, build our communities, how we interact together. Because again, we've been a city for a long time. If, if you talk to longtime Oketokians, they're, they think the roads have been too busy for 30 years. So it's a, well, if we build in a sustainable fashion, which is what I'm intending that we do, we try to do that as best as we can. We can keep the small town character. It's not, it's not the size of the town that takes away the character. It's, it's how you build it and how you get to know your neighbors and how you get to know other people. So yes, I don't want to become 90,000 next year like we were joking about, but we will grow. But I, I support it just a steady, comfortable growth that again, it wouldn't, wouldn't look much different than it is, than it has been over the time I've been on council. Or quite frankly, through the, the 40 plus years I've lived in the town, there was a point where we were growing at, I don't know, we're the fastest growing community in Alberta, and I still think we have a great town.
Yes, yeah, for sure. Now, I haven't looked at the future plans for all the developments and the, the roads. But in the, you know, 10, 20, 30 year plan, have we gone as far as to plan out some kind of ring road or some kind of way to get, to push traffic out and move traffic around? Is that in the future plans? Or is that something that we will deal with as per needed?
No, there's always, I would say there's always future plans for the roads, how to get people. It, it's very important that we do that. It's a traffic impact analysis that comes in with area structure plans and neighborhood structure plans of how the traffic will flow. The, the bigger things you might be talking about outside of that are things like 338th Avenue. So that's the road that borders the north part of Oketoks. And how to get people more easily off of 32nd Street and 338. So that's the, the east end of Oak, the, the northeast end of Oketoks. And the biggest thing you'll see there will be an overpass that's built on 338 and Highway two. So that'll take a lot of traffic that's being developed in the northeast, the development that's going on up there. That'll be the easiest way for them to get onto Highway two safely because it's an overpass. And that, that'll draw a lot of traffic off of North Ridge, South Ridge and make 32nd Street more usable. That whole area on 32nd Street, there'll be a traffic circle. There will be lights there. It'll look a lot different than it is today. As it develops out, developer will be
Right on, go ahead. Right, right on 338 and 32nd, there'll be a traffic circle there? Is that
That's correct. That's the plan right now. Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, that's the plan right now to do that.
Yeah, I think that would certainly alleviate some of it. And, you know, especially Air Ranch people, Greenhaven, even people driving up from Cimarron, it would be, if there's a traffic circle up there, they might head just south of the, the dogs park and loop around Greenhaven, come north and, you know, could have three or four traffic circles that just keep the flow of traffic moving, right? And I think that's where, where I've said this time and time again on, on these recordings, like as, if people aren't affected by the growth, it, they wouldn't complain. But as soon as people like, it's going to take you five, 10, 15 more minutes to get across town because of the traffic, then there's, there's concerns, right? So I think that's why North Oketoks will continue to see substantial growth. But even me as realtor showing people around, even this past week, they're like, well, I don't want to live in South Oketoks because I got to commute to Calgary. And then I don't want to add that 10, 12 extra minutes of drive time, right? Doesn't sound like a lot, but course of a week, course of a month, course of a year, that starts to add up, right? In the amount of time you spend driving through town.
Yeah, it's very real. I've lived in, in kind of all quadrants of town and excuse me, I've, I drive to Calgary often and we, we talk about what I do for work in the daytime. So that, that really hasn't changed. It's, if you live in the south, it takes you just that much longer to get to Calgary. But as long as we can keep the traffic flowing, we give people another opportunity to get out onto Highway two in a different way. And in like you were saying, in the long term future, there's probably a third river crossing, say somewhere west of Oketoks on 16th Street at the end of Big Rock Trail, might be a place where there's a again, future planning, a long ways away where that would take a traffic from that part of town and get you out onto the highway that way. But that, that's a ways out. I don't expect to be having this discussion with you on town council when that happens.
Yeah, yeah, no, for sure. One other quick question, well, not a quick question, but kind of a question that's been sticking out in my mind, especially after the mayor forum. And it was something that the mayor said, but no doubt you were on council when this was passed. And it's just in regards to the developers and them developing, and I guess the, the leash that the developers do have, if the economy starts to take a downturn, that the developers don't have to come to council for basically restructuring the, the development. When I heard that, I was kind of taken back. I was a little bit surprised. And I'm wondering if you could explain that a little bit to me, how that works and how that benefits us in Oketoks.
I'm not, I'll, I'll try to answer it. I'm not too sure what the question is, but let, let me just try to answer what I think it is. The developers will develop based on market forces. So that, that's what they do. So if there's the, the demand, they, they'll try to develop more and the builders will try to build more. If there's less demand, the, the opposite will happen. That, that's why I think it's challenging when people want to put a number on percent, how fast you're going to grow, what, what percent are you going to grow? It, it can be challenging because a lot of it is market driven. So I don't have that answered, but if you want to, you know, fire, fire that question at me another way, I can try it again.
Yeah, no, and this is just something that, that was my takeaway from the, the mayor forum where I guess as someone from Oketoks, a little bit concerned that the developer could declare, like, how do we declare that the economy has, is falling, things are slowing down, and now the developer can restructure the development? Because I look at Air Ranch, Ranchers Rise, that area a little bit, that seemed to seem to happen in that area where they started out with bigger lots. And as they got closer and closer to finishing, the lots got smaller and smaller and the the more and more houses were placed in that development. And I think the developer maybe gets to a point where they just want out. They want to move on to a new development, right? I don't understand how that all works, but I'm just wondering how that really does benefit the the average person from Oketoks knowing that the developer can make those decisions without having council's approval?
Okay, I think I see your question. I think I hear what you're saying now. It's for the, for the most part, in my opinion, they, they would come to council if they were changing a specific part of their, of their plan, but it, it's kind of a bigger picture than that. We, we try to plan things on kind of two quarter sections minimum. So is it meeting the density requirements of a, of a much larger area? So 320 acres worth, are they meeting the density requirement? So it, if it feels like a few different housing types get put into place, which I know does happen, that overall, what does it do to that development and the neighborhood area structure plan that they propose? Typically, in my experience, it has a minimal, a minimal change on what the neighborhood looks and feels like. So I, I think we're talking about minimal fine tuning at the end, not dramatic changes to what they've proposed.
Yep, no, that's, that's fair for sure. So what's
But I do hear your concern, Carlin. I hear your concern that developers are just changing things however they want. And there they were, they were supposed to put in big houses and they didn't. And there, there's some reality that they're, they're able to ask to change some things, but in a big picture, we're trying to look at it. Does this meet the intent of, of what they said they were going to do?
Yeah, I, and I think, well, the problem is, is the forum, the forum was good. But you only had a minute to answer a question, right? So there was no way to really explain your answer in great detail, right? So there wasn't a lot of time to explain that when I heard that at the forum or whatever. But oh, I appreciate your, your take on it. So is there anything that you want?
Oh, those forums are tough. You get one, one minute and you're, you gotta defend kind of what you did and then explain what you did. And I prefer the open house style like we had for, for council people.
Yeah, that was good. I
Trade show style. People can come and ask you questions and you flesh out your answers and
Yeah. Yeah. My overall take of the mayor forum is it was awkward. It was awkward.
It can be. I think maybe they all are.
Yeah, no, and it wasn't anything that any individual did. It was just like, okay, yeah, this is, okay, there, yeah, you get surprised, you get blindsided by a question or, you know, you're right into the flow of it. All of a sudden the dinger goes and you got to move on. But Ken, is there anything that you want to, uh, leave us with as we, uh, wrap this conversation up?
Yeah. Well, again, thanks for having me. I know you, you've got to scramble around to fit me into your schedule. But, uh, to anybody who might watch this, I, I've got a lot of experience doing this. I've got a lot of passion to do it. I do truly love this town. I wouldn't do this job anywhere else. I'm not looking for a different career in politics where I become an MLA or something like that. I, I love Oketoks. I only want to be a counselor in this town and, and try to do what's best for this community.
Right on. Thanks, Ken. I appreciate you and, uh, appreciate your service to this community.
Yeah, again, thanks for having me. Appreciate it.
You bet. Okay. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.